The following program is a production of Ho'ikea Kauai Community Media.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with our Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair here at Ho'ikea Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President at the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island.
Today, we'll be speaking with Mel Reposo, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process and giving you a chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters, and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
That's right. So let's dive in. Please join us in welcoming Mel to the conversation.
Aloha. Hey, Mel. Thank you for doing this.
We love it.
It's always fun. And thanks for having us here, man. This is awesome.
Really, it's real deal.
Yeah, it is. It's so difficult to reach a lot of people all at once, right? And so this is one way to do it. And so thank you for being here.
Yeah, Ho'ikea, ho'ikea.org.
So hey, our first question is, can you just tell the audience a little bit about yourself? And specifically, why you felt the need to take on the kulianna of leadership in our community?
Well, it's not a very difficult question. I think everybody runs for public office or leadership roles because they want to make a difference. I've been blessed and I've been honored to have been able to serve this community. This is my 16th year, which is kind of long. I remember when I first started and Chair Kaipou Singh was there and I'm thinking, wow, man, this guy's been here forever. And now I look back and it's like, I've been here forever. But you know, I was never a political guy. I was a cop and had really no interest in politics. And everyone gets to that point where any issue comes, is brought to your attention, and you ask for help from the government leaders and you don't get the responses. And then at that point, I decided that I was going to run. And that was back in 1998. And I ran with absolutely no experience and came number seven in the primary. And I got scared, like, oh my gosh, because I absolutely did not think I had a chance. There were seven incumbents running. But after the primary, I said, holy moly, let's go to work. We can actually win this thing. And we didn't. We fell short by a couple hundred votes. But then I got active in government, local government, and started to follow issues. And then four years later, I ran again and I got elected. And I've been serving this community now for a long time. And the motivation is simply to try to make this place better. I think everyone knows by now that my two kids live on the mainland with my first grandchild. And it's rough when you see our families having to leave, not by choice, but because they can't afford to live here. So that just really makes me more motivated to continue to serve. And again, you know, the people of Kauai have been great. They've allowed me to do this for so long. And you know, I just want to continue. Thank you, Mel.
I appreciate that because it'll segue us into the first question that we have, which is about our housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand for affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Here's your question. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Well, you know, this term, when I had a four-year break, when I came back and I was, you know, again, honored to have been selected as a chair, my vision was to, for this term, this current council, to really focus on the local people. You know, local does not mean a color. You know, a lot of people, you know, we get called racist or discriminatory when we say local, but local means you live here. Local means you live here full-time, not part-time, in my opinion. It's, we have a lot of absentee owners, part-time owners, and that is part of the problem where our inventory. Lexi, you said it right. Our problem is we don't have inventory. It's basic economics, supply and demand. When your supply is low, your prices go up, and it's incredibly high now. The median prices, you know, they range anywhere from, you know, $900,000 to $1.4 million for a home. No one can afford that. So on the council, what we try to do is, you know, there's many things we don't control. We don't control real estate. You know, we really control real property taxes. It's really the only, the control that we have. So we're trying to focus on making sure that we can keep our local residents against, again, our full-time residents in their homes. And we do that by keeping the real property taxes on homeowners low and on part-time or absentee owners high. And there's many programs for, you know, local residents that may own a second home or a third home. Definitely, we encourage that. If you can afford to build your empire in homes, but to benefit from the low income or from the low property taxes, then you must rent those out in an affordable range to our local residents. And that's, that's pretty much what we can do. But it's very hard when the market is where it's at and you have local families that are approached by outside people that are offering cash money. And it's so appealing that they take the money and they sell their properties and they move. So, you know, the affordable marketing, the affordable housing market here on Kauai, I think Kauai does an excellent job. I think Adam Reversi and the Housing Agency, they do a great job with working with private developers, utilizing federal programs and tax credit financing to put up units. And I think Kauai leads the state in putting up per capita affordable housing units. What's missing is that middle class. And what we did this year, we increased the property taxes on hotel and resort and vacation rentals. And that came with some opposition from the communities. But at the end of the day, we need funds in this county so we can purchase lands that are available before the billionaires buy them or the millionaires buy them. If we can secure the lands, then we have a much better chance at providing middle-class housing. You know, the school teachers, the police, the firemen, the nurses, the bellman at the hotel and all of our people. Right now, we don't own land. The counties doesn't have lands like many of the other counties. But if we have land, we can work with private developers to put up these middle-class housing opportunities for sale or rent. We can do it at a range that the local people can afford. And the way we did that was by increasing taxes on hotel and resorts because they can pass their increases to the visitors. Same with the vacation rentals. See, when our local people's taxes go up, they have nowhere to pass that increases to. They eat it, which means they go get another job or they end up selling and moving. So we're trying real hard to figure out how we can create more inventory in all of the groups because it's sorely needed. Yeah.
So can I ask a quick follow-up question? Maybe it isn't quick, but a follow-up question nonetheless. So one of the things that becomes a challenge, you know, there's the parcel of land right over in Puhie by the gas station that, right, there's plans to maybe put some affordable or workforce housing in there. Local neighborhood folks were really unhappy about that for really understandable reasons. But, you know, it sort of prevents sometime, in many cases, right, the housing from going in. We see it start up in Kapaa. There was the arson out in LALA, Port Allen, which I'm assuming is motivated by people who don't want that project to go forward. And so how do you, how do we get more people on board with the fact that we need housing and it might be inconvenient for some folks?
I think everyone knows we need housing. I mean, every resident of this, of this island is, it's no secret that we need more housing. We always have to deal with the not-in-my-backyard, the NIMBY issue that happens regardless of what we want to do, whether it's housing or infrastructure. In the Puhie case, it's a little unique because those people have been there for a very long time. And when they purchased into that subdivision, there was a restriction from Grow Farm that said that lands would be preserved as a park. I think we as a county, I think we have opportunities to look at other properties that may not have that types of restrictions. And it's very hard to fault the residents that bought into that and understanding that there's already traffic issues in that corridor. And so while I understand what their complaints are, I mean, it is an opportunity for the county to develop some housing. I would suggest that we work with the larger landowners and try to find comparable pieces of land in that area. Because I think they exist. I think Grow Farm is really looking at getting rid of a lot of their lands as well as the new owners of A&amp;B, the Canoots and Trust. I mean, these people have lands that are available. And I think that is why, I go back to my last response regarding the funds. If we had a bank of funds, they could go out and negotiate with these landowners and purchase these parcels. And it has to be near infrastructure because infrastructure is really very expensive in a new development. So, you know, that's why Puhie was so attractive because it's right near all the water and the wastewater and everything else. So it's always a challenge finding the right parcel, but I think there's many opportunities and I think we should take advantage of them. This property tax increase, which specifically targets those funds for middle-class property development, I think will be a great tool.
Yeah, I agree. Nice. Thank you. So the next question is about economic diversification. So I just made nine years on Kauai this month, and so short timer.
Yeah, right.
I know, right? But for the past nine years and then the nine years before that, and probably the nine years before that, everyone's been talking about diversifying the economy and sort of moving away from dependence on tourism. Tourism is always going to be a part of our life here. It's an important economic driver and I don't see that changing. But what are your, some of your ideas about diversifying the economy? Right, you know, we could look at agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, the arts. Where do you see your priorities in diversifying the economy?
Well, first, let me say that tourism is here to stay. And I think anyone that thinks we can wean ourselves off of tourism 100% is imagining things because that's not going to happen. I mean, we are a tourist industry. But we also have a potential for having an amazing ag industry. I mean, we are here, we're all here because of ag. All of us that's been here forever, we all were here because of the plantations. And you know, our families, our great, great greats came and to work on plantations. And, you know, I think that is where we should move. I think we really should. And it does come with subsidies. That's how plantation stayed for so long. The sugar was here for so long because of government subsidies. And if we want to preserve the agricultural culture of this wonderful island, I mean, I think we've got to focus our attention. You know, Lidgate chocolates. His presentation at your governor's luncheon last week was phenomenal. We should be, we should be his largest supporter and cheerleader. We should, we should be. I mean, that, why can't we become the largest cacao plantation in the United States? We have Kauai Coffee, largest active coffee plantation in the United States. Why aren't we out there promoting more ag? The Agricultural Development Corporation, the ADC, they have so many lands available out on the west side and even towards our side. But their lands are fallow. Their lands aren't being used because it's so expensive to lease the lands from our ADC. And I've spoken to the ADC director and I said, you guys need to be incentivizing small farmers, getting people back in the ground, in the dirt, producing food for our island. And that is, I think, the direction we need to go because all of the other, the technology and the healthcare, those are all great. But when you look at the resources that we have currently with lands, there is no reason why this island should not be leading the country in ag. It's just we have, there's so many possibilities, tropical fruits, tropical flowers, our beef, our local beef. I mean, we have, we have the foundation, the blueprint. So we as a government should be encouraging and facilitating these industries for moving forward. We need slaughterhouses. We need to be helping our farmers and ranchers with resources so they can, they can grow. And I think really that's, that's the opportunity. We've tried the high-tech. And in fact, we have a lot of people here that are working in high-tech, that are working remotely from their companies on the mainland. But we're not developing that industry here. It's very difficult because we're so far away. When you think about Hawaii in relation to New York or the East Coast, you get a six-hour time difference or five-hour time difference. Very hard to do business, but it's still an option that I think needs to be explored. But if you ask me where we should attack, I would say ag. And let's get our farmers in the ground and let's get our ranchers to ranch. And two things, right? You develop an industry that's viable. And number two, you provide food sustainability for our people. It just makes total sense. It just makes sense.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Well, then, moving forward into climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of our climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to our natural habitats. Addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability are critical for the island's future. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. So your question would be, how would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai? Please describe one specific project or initiative you would champion as a county council member.
You know, back, I mean, probably 10 years ago now, Councilmember Joanne DiCamara and myself introduced and got passed the nation's strictest coastal protection bill. And I'm very proud of that. Because everybody thinks Joanne and I were enemies, but no, we actually agreed on a lot more than we disagreed with. And over the years, that law has gotten soft. And I think, you know, we see, it's clear now, even to those that maybe at one time didn't believe in sea level rise and climate change, are seeing, seeing it right now. We're seeing it clearly. I think, you know, focusing back on our coastal protections is critical. We just, you know, Anini Beach, we just had a big discussion on Anini Beach that the landowner was actually encroaching on the state beach. Because initially, you know, when you buy your property, your property is so big. And then as sea level rise occurs, you know what? You lose your property and the beach is the state's property. So we were successful in getting the landowner to move all of his stuff off of the state beach and open up the beach for the public. But we need to do more of that because it's happening in many other properties around the island. But I think, you know, educating and making sure the public understands the dangers and as we start applying or approving permits for construction of structures, that we gotta take that into account. Our shoreline bill is strict and I think it could be stricter. You know, if you want to buy a shoreline property, you have to understand that it's going to come with some consequences. That you don't want to build it so close. And it's not about landowner rights. It's about, we're trying to protect your property and your life. So I think it's educating the people and making, making people understand why we do what we do. But it is real. And, you know, I've met with our congressional delegation as well as our state delegation because our highways are all susceptible to sea level rise. And what are we going to do when we got to move an entire highway inland? I mean, we need to have that discussion. So that's kind of where it's at. I mean, I think we got to be very aware and be willing to make those tough decisions as leaders at the local level, but more importantly, at the state and federal level. Because it's going to impact our residents tremendously.
Absolutely.
And so the second part of that question though was sort of about environmental sustainability in general. I mean, I know that an issue that's important to you is the landfill. Is that something you want to share anything about?
How long is this show?
I know, right?
You know, the landfill is my, my largest concern. I lose more sleep with the landfill than any other issue. And I know people say, wow, what about housing? What about cost of living? This is an issue that I've been battling for a very long time, the landfill. Because if you don't know, our landfill is slated to be at capacity in three years. And yes, our administration is working on getting some permitting for expansions. But assuming we get the expansions, and it's not a guarantee, because there's a lot of environmental concerns with this permit application. Because the west side, the water table is so shallow, it's a dangerous place to have a landfill, in my opinion. And so even assuming we get that permit to expand and go even higher. And in fact, one of the expansions is to go over the phase one of the landfill, which is an unlined landfill. It's an unlined, there's no liner underneath, which I totally oppose. But even if we get that, we're looking at possibly another five or six or seven years. We don't have a plan for a new landfill or an alternative technology to deal with our waste. So that is a huge problem. It is, for me, again, it's my biggest concern because we don't have a solution, even if we get the expansions. Now, diversion obviously is one that we really got to focus on. And I think we're at the point now where our county doesn't have a choice but to really move forward with promoting diversion of trash to the landfill. That's the only thing we can do. Until we develop a technology that'll vaporize this stuff in thin air, we don't have many options. So it's, I'm frustrated. You know, we've asked for several briefings and there's really no aggressive movement to a resolution. And I'm concerned.
Understandably.
If you don't have a landfill or any way to dispose of your trash, I don't care what your plans are to build housing or anything else because you need your infrastructure in place to make all of these other opportunities possible. And we don't. And landfill is one. I mean, wastewater as well as water. I mean, those three major infrastructural requirements are in bad shape right now. And I'm truly concerned. We had a briefing from the water department the other day. The five-year plan is over $200 million. We don't have $200 million. Over the next 20 years, it's over a billion dollars just to bring our water systems up to standard. And we're operating off of 100-year-old pipes, 100-year-old pipes. And we don't have many options. And that's why for me, the infrastructure is, should be everyone's priority right now. Because you can't, you can't have housing. You can't have housing if you don't have water. You can't have housing if you don't have wastewater. So I think we got to go back to basics and fix, fix our infrastructure.
Thank you. So the next question is from me too. Well, visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai. The surge in traffic when schools resumed in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, though they're limiting them at the moment, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars presents unique challenges. Next page. My question is on the next page. Hold on a second. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
My answer is not a very popular one because, because like, whenever we talk about this, I get, I get the backlash from the community. But, you know, number one, our bus system, you cannot compare Kauai to San Francisco or Seattle or Portland. And I hear that all the time. In all my years, I hear, you know, we need a system like Seattle. Well, you don't. We don't have the ridership. You're not going to create that ridership. You know, unfortunately, on Kauai, many people have multiple jobs. They got to pick up kids from school. They got to take grandma to the doctor or mom to the doctor or dad. So getting around this island on a bus system is almost impossible. I mean, and that's just the way it is. And we're not going to change that. The big issue right now is we don't have bus drivers. You know, I got a lot of flack when the bus had to cancel their Sunday services. And to be honest, you know, of course, it's frustrating, but, you know, we got a heck of a transportation department. They do a good job, but if they don't have drivers, what can you do? And I say this all the time, if any of you are looking for work, go apply and be a bus driver. They pay well. It's a great job, but if we don't have drivers, we can't get the bus moving. And it was, when I spoke to the director and she had to share that news of closing down the Sunday service, I mean, she was emotional about it because she knows how important that bus is. But what do you do? You only have so many drivers and it's a problem. You know, I wish I had the authority for a day, you know, you adjust school schedules, you improve the school bus system, which they're running into the same problem as well. We got to get more cars off the road. And how do you do that? It's very hard when you live in a community, like in a rural community where you need your car because you're making so many stops. You cannot, you cannot live your day on a bus. So it's difficult. So having said that, you know, we have an amazing network of private lands that were once used by the cane trucks on this island. I believe that we need more lanes. And I know there's an argument, you bring more lanes, you're going to get more cars. No, see, we already have the cars. It's not going to get better, really. I mean, it's just not going to get better because we don't have enough travel lanes for our vehicles, whether they're buses. You know, you get, unfortunately, you get a car accident on the highway and you're heading to work, you're going to be late. If you got a plane, you're going to miss it. If you got a doctor's appointment, you're going to miss it. So, you know, I've always proposed utilizing the cane roads as alternate routes. And even if we did that just for emergency uses only, I think we could do it. And yes, it's going to come with a cost, but it can be done. And these private landowners, I think it would be beneficial for them as their lands get sold and developed in the next generation, they're going to need infrastructure as well. They're going to need roads. So let's partner with them. And if they don't want to partner, then let's go, let's go condemn their land and get it. I'm serious. Because, listen, we can talk about traffic all day long. We can talk about improving our bus system. We can talk about all of these biking, walking and so forth. At the end of the day, we are no, we are not like the metropolis cities of the mainland where we have so many people that live and work in their area. It's just not going to work. I'm a realist. And it's tough being a realist that's a politician. But I don't know how else to be. You know, I don't see any other solution at this point other than to open up more lanes of travel, plain and simple. Not popular, but listen, you know, my cell number is on my county website. It's everywhere. Everybody knows my number. If you have an idea and a better solution, I am open. I've been thinking and dealing with this for a long time. And I think we're at the point now, we got to make more lanes. And the state's not looking at doing a new highway. I don't think the state can afford to build a new highway. I've spoke to our congresspeople, even offered to name the highway after them if they can come up with the funds and do a nice inland highway that could go across and be so pretty. It's not going to happen. So we, as a county now, got to take it upon ourselves to make it happen. Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, moving into the next question.
You looked a little surprised with that, Lexi.
Well, no, I just feel like it's such a big challenge and it all stems from the infrastructure need for one. But two, utilizing the routes that have been present, I don't see what could be such a large difficulty to implement that for emergency focus if we're going to stick to that avenue as well. Because they are, they just need additional TLC, like they are functional. They have been working for a long period of time. And so the conversation is really challenging because no one wants to expand the highway. No one wants to continue to have a highway in their backyard or in their front yard that you hear consistently throughout your entire night. And so I can hear that and understand that. So how do we make it better if we are not utilizing routes that are already present?
Yeah, you know, I learned long ago, you work smart, not hard. And unfortunately, common sense is not always so common.
Well, and so that's why I was like surprised because the conversation is really difficult. And I know many people are thinking about it as well. All right. So moving into more focus of agriculture and food sustainability, which you have mentioned a few times in our conversation. So agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to our economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persists. So what is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support your vision?
Well, I think I covered that a lot earlier. And I think the county council has always supported the administration's request for funding for grants to the agricultural sector. And we continue to do that. What we need more though is, we need more planning and more visualizing how this will happen. And, you know, our Kauai economic, or our economic opportunities, Economic Development Division or Department really needs to get out there and figure out with the farmers. And to me, I think that's how you learn, right? I have no experience in farming, except my four-by-four raised garden bed that I did during the pandemic that produced enough food for me and several other people. I was amazed and never had any training, just YouTube. And, but getting with the farmers and the ranchers and figuring out what do they need. I know right now, for ranching, we need, we need more slaughterhouses. And we need, we need public slaughterhouses where ranchers can take their beef. Rather than, right now, they're sending it off to the mainland to be grown or I forget, or fattened or whatever, and then slaughtered and then sent back. No, we need to have that all here. And we need help from the state and federal government as well. A county cannot afford all of these things, but the discussion has to happen. But the, the discussion has to happen, as well as our farmers. I already mentioned, ADC, they need to be, that's a state agency. We should be incentivizing farmers. I can tell you, if you're a kid growing up and, and you, you're watching all these influencers on YouTube and Instagram making all these money, and then you have another option here on Kauai to go get dirty and work really, really hard and make little money, I think the, the choice is obvious, right? So how do we make that attractive? Well, I think, you know, it starts at our schools. But we got to have an, an environment that is welcoming to these people. Excuse me, we got to have that environment that, that kids will say, yeah, that's pretty cool. And, and I can make money. And you cannot have that if you don't have the infrastructure, like you just mentioned. We don't have the infrastructure in place to promote. So if there's a serious desire to promote agriculture here in Hawaii, yeah, we can. And it's going to come with, with some cost, but the return will be tremendous. Can you imagine if, you know, if, if the state came out with, with a law that said, just take in the DOE if all of the schools, or even if you said, we're going, we're going to pilot this thing, and 50% of our schools in the state are required to purchase 75% of their food for the kids locally? That would create a market. That would instantly create a market. Now pharmacists, my gosh, if I can sell my stuff here locally and have a, have a constant income stream, then, then it becomes attractive. But no, we don't. Our kids are still eating stuff in school that is not coming from our state. Why? We, we're, we're the Garden Island. So I think Kauai should be the pilot project for our state. I think we should start with Kauai. And, you know, unfortunately, the county doesn't have the authority. You know, we don't regulate schools, we don't have any say in schools. But, you know, we can, we can be a voice and say, hey, state, let's just start 50% of the food that you serve has to come from local farmers and ranchers. I mean, I think that's a start. But we got, we, we need to define this industry or redefine the industry. It's obviously not the sugar industry, but redefine it with what we have. And we've seen the, you go to the craft, I mean, not the craft fairs, but the Sunshine Markets on our island. You see the variety of stuff you can buy now? It's amazing. And it's smaller scale, but, you know, our job as a state now and as a county is to enlarge that so it attracts more farmers, more of our local kids to get into farming.
Fantastic.
Takes a decision.
It does. So a number of years back, and I won't mention the elected official's name, there was an effort to do something like that at the schools. And I don't know what happened with it, it just sort of disappeared. And so if you want the chamber's support in this effort, just let us know. Yeah, it's a really smart way to diversify the economy.
Yeah. I think it all starts with learning from the farmers and ranchers. What, what would they need? What, what do you, what do you need to, to make this viable? What would it take for you to be able to expand and work with the colleges? And maybe even the high schools now? I love where high school kids are taking college courses and getting college credit. It's so different. What an opportunity to have kids come up and, and work on the farm to learn and, and find their purpose. There's many opportunities.
All right, so the last substantive question is about destination management and tourism. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai? And, you know, as they're maybe to the Destination Management Action Plan, which aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike?
For me, it's preservation of our local resources, our natural resources, not taking away the ability for our local residents to enjoy the land that they live in. I mean, that, to me, is the most frustrating. And I think, you know, I, I've heard so much about the destination management. During COVID, you know, a movie came out and everyone said, we're going to change and we're going to, we're going to find the right visitors that'll come and just spend money. And, and yeah, you know, that's all good on paper. But I think the reality is, when you offer discount travel to Hawaii, Kauai is such a place of beauty. You know, Kalalau Trail, right? Unfortunately, they had that breakout of the virus. But, you know, so I, I've been on the mainland. I've seen the commercials that show for Hawaii. And it, it doesn't limit it to people that spend money. It, those commercials are for everyone. Again, we, we got to acknowledge that tourism is here to stay and we need to respect that industry because it takes care of so many of our residents here on the island. I worked in tourism, I was a night auditor for 13 years while I was on the council. So I appreciate the industry. But also, I think the destination management plans need to focus on preservation of our natural resources and our community resources. And what they did out at Ka Beach with, with the community, limiting the numbers of people that's going in, that worked. Now, what that did, though, it pushed more people to Hyaina and to Anini. So where is that balance? You know, I, I, one of the things I really would like to see, and again, this is going to upset some people, but we have issued so many direct flight routes to Kauai from all over, and that changes, you know? You hear it, oh, now we're flying to Oakland, now we're flying to Vegas. And, and that's done without any input from the community. It, it's, boom, here you go, Kauai. And I think when the airport came out with a plan to expand the Leuva Airport, or when the state came out with that, the community stood up and said, no, we don't, we don't need no more, we don't need no more people. We got a lot of people coming in every day. So I've always advocated for a capacity study. Where are we on Kauai? Are we able to handle the, the number of visitors that we get on a daily basis on our island? There has to be a study like that made because our infrastructure, as, as we just shared, we talked so much about, is struggling. And what is our, what is our capacity? And, and it's, I, I think, to me, that's where you start the discussion. And when you reach that capacity, and then there's no more direct flights. And in fact, it may even show as these, these routes quit through attrition, then they don't get reinstated. But that capacity study is vital in, in any discussions. But again, it comes down to, I don't think any local resident, and remember my local, the definition of a local, right? Permanent full-time resident here. I don't care for how long or it's like, you live here and you're full-time here, you should never be deprived of the ability to go to a beach and enjoy beach time with your family and not have to deal with a crowded beach, cannot even get a parking spot. That is where I get a little frustrated.
Thank you for including me.
Yeah, you're local. You are. I mean, there's no time requirement.
No time requirement, yeah. Malahini for, for as long as I'll be here, I think.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but again, you know, we've been called some really negative words because we, because we say local. But local means you live here and full-time. You contribute to the community. We love you, man, we welcome you guys.
Thanks, Mal.
Well, great. Well, as we come to a conclusion, is there anything else you would like to share with our viewers today?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the chamber. You know, I, I think education is key, informing and educating is always important. And you guys do this every, every election, and we appreciate you guys. You guys do so much for the community. And then Hoikee, I can never say enough of Hoikee because they are the only one now that is providing any source of information for the public. And it's not a, not a, trying to initiate to the Garden Island newspaper, but it is what it is. Like I said, I'm a realist, I call it as I see it. And I have not seen an article in the paper regarding local government, local politics, local issues in a very long time. We got the Honolulu information, we got all Honolulu stories and, and the presidential stuff. But, but the most important thing that I want to share is that in the primary election, we had a 32% voter turnout, which is quite embarrassing. It's so convenient now. And when, when you get 32% voter turnout, that's, that's 30, the minority of people on this island, the minority of voters are making the choices for your leaders. So folks, register to vote if you haven't registered. If you are registered, please vote in the general election. Whether you vote for me or not is irrelevant. We need you to vote. We need to get those numbers up to 75 or 80%, hopefully more. But then you get true representation from the people and the elected officials that get elected or elected by the majority of the voters here on the island. So again, thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
So mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made the series possible.
First, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
Great. We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
And a special thanks goes out to Hoikee, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We're also grateful for Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We also couldn't have done it without the Kikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters, make it heard. Be sure to vote for the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thank you for watching, ahui ho.